City Clerk, please call the row.
Vice Mayor Campbell. Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Hodgson. Commissioner Martin.
Present.
Mayor Grant.
Present.
City Attorney Ottnott.
Here.
City Manager Hobbs. Roll call completed.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. At this time, we're going to have communications from the public. This would be thirty minutes or less. I am going to turn this over to Vice Mayor Richard Campbell.
This portion of the meeting, the public is able to speak on any issue apart from the issues on the agenda. Each person will have three minutes. And when you do come, please indicate your name and your address. I'm looking here. Madam Mayor, but...
Yes, sir. Okay, City Clerk, can you... Says there's no one.
No.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, no one has signed up at present?
I see a hand jumping up.
Okay. Mr. Wilkinson, if you can please come to the podium.
Good evening. On behalf of Broward Street, my name is Sam Wilkinson. Sixteen Northwest Thirty Eighth Avenue, Lauda Hill. Three 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 one one. On behalf of Broward Street, St. George, we had a moving and grooving Saturday. And we want to thank the Commission for we had a great time. And we missed a lot of you. So Vice Mayor Campbell, he came out. So the City Manager, he was there. And also Melissa Dunn, she was there. Mayor, I didn't see you at all.
Isn't that something? I'm usually everywhere, right?
I know. Neither was Mr. Martin. He wasn't there.
But you're going to have another one. And we will definitely all be there, sir.
Anyway, anyway, you were representing. Your tents were up. And we had a great time. And on behalf of Broward Street, St. George community, we want to thank you.
Yes. So thank you so much, Mr. Wilkinson. Anyone else? Okay. So Mr. Wilkinson, thank you kindly for that. I will say that in spite of the fact that we all were not there, we were there in spirit. And we are one hundred percent behind St. George. And whatever it is that you need for us to support you in, we will definitely be there. And the next party, I'll definitely be there with my dancing shoes, okay? So thank you kindly. City Manager?
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. And so we have completed that portion of our meeting. And we thank you so much for your engagement. We're going to ask if everyone can stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one united and unified across all, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to go right into the meeting. And we are going to start with our minutes of the Special City Commission meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty five. I will ask for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have housekeeping.
Pardon?
Housekeeping.
Okay.
With the Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Speak into the mic, sir.
Eight twenty twenty five. There are two items. The removal of item number thirteen. That's resolution number twenty five R eleven two two five. It's a replacement for item number eighteen. A new resolution number twenty five R twelve two forty.
Okay. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. And so we're going to go and ask for a motion for... Yes, sir. May we have a motion?
So moved.
A second? We have a motion in a second. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes. And this has been passed four zero. We're now going to ask for the approval of the minutes of the Special City Commission meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty five. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? We have a motion in a second. May I please have the vote?
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes. This has been passed four zero. Item being minutes of the City Commission meeting for November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second. Have a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes. And this has been passed four zero. And we are now going to be going into our presentations. I did see that our County Commissioner Hazel Rogers is here. I saw her earlier. If someone can get her for me, please. Thank you. Please give a warm welcome to our County Commissioner, Madam Hazel P. Rogers. Everyone, please give her a hand. Twenty nine years of elected service, a lifetime of community service. We welcome you to the city of Lauda Hill, and we appreciate you. And you're here for a presentation?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. But let me salute properly to Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayors, City Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. And to the public who is here and those might be listening online, social media. Good evening to everyone. Yes, I am your Broward... One of your Broward County Commissioners. And it's good when you have more than one. You know, we can make sure we get a lot more. We are hopeful. Mr. City Attorney, did I say Mr. City Attorney? I missed you? It's not okay. I heard that chuckle, that nice chuckle. Right? So let me just say, I wanted to do something differently, Madam Mayor. I really wanted to share what we're doing in Broward County. Yes, we have things that are similar. Yes, we collect taxes. And we have to pay all of our bagels, public safety, and everything else that we have to do. But there are certain things that we do at Broward County. And that is our economic engine, is what we call it. And it deals with our ports, our airport, our seaport, and all the activities that we have at the port. So that is where I would like to start. Because I know there's a little video of our port and the activities there.
A new road is opening, and it's more than asphalt. It's a story of innovation, resilience, and community, led by Broward County Highway Construction and Engineering Division. Under the Public Works Department, the Convention Center Connector project tackled complex engineering challenges to improve traffic flow near one of the region's busiest gateways. Finding the right location meant working around tight spaces, high-security zones, and active port operations without disrupting daily commerce. The route had to remain outside secure port areas, ensuring safety while keeping freight and passenger movement uninterrupted. Crews navigated underground fuel, water, and sewer lines with precision. Contractors installed over one hundred auger cast piles, some more than a hundred feet deep, to support the thirteen hundred-foot bridge in South Florida's tough soil. Contaminated soil was remediated to protect the environment while Port Everglades stayed fully operational. The result? A two-lane road with security fencing, a bridge with barrier walls, a roundabout to streamline traffic, checkpoints, modern lighting, signals, intelligent transportation systems, and clear signage. This new route eases congestion, boosts safety, and lets vehicles bypass the port's core. The project, initiated by Broward County Highway Construction and Engineering Division, designed by WSP Incorporated, built by lead engineering contractors, and inspected by Broward County Certified Business Enterprises, was supported by prime consultant F&amp;J Engineering Group and subconsultant Solid Consulting. Over ninety percent of inspections were performed by CBEs, proving local talent builds world-class infrastructure, completed ahead of schedule and within budget. The project was funded by the Gas Tax, Penny for Transportation Surtax, and a State of Florida Department of Transportation County Incentive Grant. This project is a smart investment in Broward County's future. The Convention Center Connector isn't just open, it's paving the way... The Convention Center Connector isn't just open, it's paving the way for.
Okay, that's your tax dollars working for you, and we just wanted to share that this afternoon. We all recognize as we expand, as we grow, we can say, okay, the census told us so. We knew the growth, we know where the growth was gonna be, and it's right here in Broward County. And we are the envy of South Florida. So, I am just loving that we are on this side of the conversation. Yes, that connector road is critical to what we're trying to achieve. You cannot build a new hotel, have increased productivity from our economic engines, which is our airport and our seaport, and then be caught up in congestion. Can't move for hours on end sometimes if there's a major accident. So, that investment was one of a kind for us. And to know that we finished that project within reason before the scheduled time, to know that we were on the budget a little bit, we'll take anything, all right? That is what we are hoping for in everything. We are transparent with all that we do with that project. So, we're glad it is done, and the roadway is ready for you to traverse. I have not traveled that new road yet, but I'm hearing everyone talking about it. So, if you need a tour, I can arrange that for you. So, I'm hearing about that. Ready for the tour? Downtown Fort Lauderdale, less congestion, less than we have here on Fifty-Fifth and Oakland Park and State Road Seven and Oak Park. I'm like, it's a lot. So, we are trying. But as we grow, as our population grow, we expect that we're gonna see a lot more construction, because we're saying, yes, Florida is affordable. And whatever we're doing in Broward County will help us attract more people coming into Broward. All right, Omni Hotel, I know everyone is familiar with that hotel. It's owned by Broward County. I don't know of any other county that owns an hotel, but it's operated by Omni. And of course, that you know that is one of those major international hotels that everyone wants to stay at. So, we are looking forward to that. The project also improved access to the beaches and nearby businesses along Seventeenth Street Causeway, erasing congestion or easing congestion. We don't know for how long, but we are doing whatever we can to make sure. About Port Everglades. Port Everglades set new records for all three primary business line in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, four million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand guests on multiple days cruises. All right, so we love when they cruise, because guess what? They will stop at our restaurants while they wait for their flights going back out. And that's what we try to achieve. The Master Vision Plan Update, let me say, thanks to everyone's effort and input on the twenty twenty-four Master Plan Update approved by Broward County. Yes, the plan identifies three point eight billion of potential projects over the next twenty years. Just like your city, we plan, and it doesn't happen for another five, ten, or fifteen years. It happens at the county level also, just like we do at the cities. So, we are excited about that plan and what, how we are creating jobs. That is important to each and every one of us. So, as you look and ask questions as we grow, and try to meet all of the needs here in Broward County, we know we have to go international. Folks will tell you, yes, we are the catch basin for everything. So, we love it. So, everything flows through Broward County. They might stop over in Palm Beach or Miami-Dade, but we make sure we are getting our fair share. The port's strategic positioning makes it the ideal hub for companies conducting business in Central America, South America, the Caribbean, the Far East, and Europe. We touch every region of the world, and we are proud of it. Another opportunity to promote Broward County City is our Foreign Trade Zones. And I know everyone is aware of the Foreign Trade Zone. We understand now more than ever that tariff is so important, and there are many ways for us to make sure we don't have to pay if we don't have to. And nothing is illegal about what you're doing. You're holding on to your dollars, doing other investments, until those merchandise leave the shores of the state of Florida. So, we'll put it like that. So, there are many reasons why cities should look to have your properties designated as a Foreign Trade Zone. It's not an entity, it's not a building, it's just where, wherever you would like to open up or provide that opportunity, that designation can be granted by the county. And there's a lot of benefits to all of that. Fast-in, fast-out routes to major highways also is an attraction of small businesses who cannot afford to be at Port Everglades, to be in your cities and creating opportunities for employment. So, please continue to that. The value of goods moving through Port Port Everglades, the Foreign Trade Zone, is over nine billion dollars. It is major. We just need to understand more about the Foreign Trade Zone and how they can benefit your businesses. I always speak to the fact that if we educate our realtors and our property owners, we're helping our cities. And I look forward to challenging any one of you. I won't pick who I would like to work through with on that. Most people would think I would choose you, Ray. If you called me, I think, do it first, all right? Don't whisper in my ears, just do it. And we can have that happening, all right? We have successfully hired a Foreign Trade Zone Senior Business Development Person. All these years, we never did. So, why is Broward County doing it now? Because we recognize the value, all right? So, FITC, as you know, international business was celebrated its tenth year in October. And we are so proud because we had a lot of faults, more than we have ever had. And it is important that we recognize that commerce is important. FITC holds a significant position with Florida, particularly in Broward County, and is highly regarded as the premier regional event for international trade, attracting participants from over seventy different countries. For that, and it started with a Commissioner from, from the city, and expanded to our former Mayor of Broward County. And if someone would know that, I'm talking about Commissioner Dale Holness. FITC continues to grow each year, which is evident by increased number of attendees. And we look forward to year eleven. But we started a component with the Foreign Trade Zone. We marketed the Foreign Trade Zone off port site, Foreign Trade Zone. And this year, last year, it was one bus that did the tour. We had three different buses who went on the tour, touring Broward County and your communities. So, we are telling you, others are looking, let's not be late with making the right decision. Madam Mayor, I'm responding to your and your City Manager's comments and concern about elevator safety. And that will be on our agenda. But I want to share with you something that I learned. Okay, because I will tell you, if it's a weekend, I'm not taking an elevator. I'm gonna be walking up those stairs, all right? You understand why? Someone might not rescue me fast enough, so I don't. But I also learned that the elevators could be fixed, but because there are other issues, that's the reason that they have not updated or upgraded the certification. So, we're gonna have some discussions around that, because we need to be transparent to those users of the elevator. They need to know, yes, it's safe, but there are some other issues. Maybe the tiling on the floor, you know, the fan is not working, whatever, but it's not a public safety issue. That's the reason that they don't do it. But we're gonna have the conversation tomorrow. So, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
That's gonna be on your agenda tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, perhaps we'll stop by if possible.
That would be nice. Okay, good. Thirty-year building inspection reports are the jurisdiction of municipal government. We hear that question all, all the time, complaints regarding elevator accessibility. You know, you, it might not be, sometimes you go home, if you live in a condo, you go and your elevator is not working, but you don't know when that elevator will be operational. So, those are some of the things that we can have mandatory in between the city and the county.
Yeah.
Come up with some solutions, all right?
Thank you.
So, I'm looking forward to that. Broward County facts, Broward County Budget for twenty twenty-six, eight point eight billion, one point seven billions from property taxes. And we know property tax covers almost everything that we do. And that is another discussion I would like to have, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We need to be able to talk to our constituents about the property tax and what it pays for specifically. And we don't know what the legislatures will do, but we know our job is to make sure our constituents fully understands the property tax and the value of the resources that we benefit from and the resources that's impacted by that. I have one last, two last statements. The budget prioritized reserves and transparency. Our major allocations were public safety, essential services like parks, libraries, museums, and human services. Broward County Government has six thousand employees and sixty agencies that provide services, numerous services. Broward County Public School is the community's largest employer. Most people don't know that, local for us. Their tourism and hospitality levels are exceeding pre-pandemic series and steady growth in twenty twenty-five, driven by the expansion of the Convention Center. It is beautiful, you gotta go, and the new hotel, Omni. Tourist Development Tax shows positive results. So, visitors are coming, we are taxing them, and we are investing the dollars back into our communities. So, it's always good to talk to Lauderdale Lakes and Lauderdale Hill and Plantation and Oakland Park and Sunrise. Those are the five cities that I do represent as District Nine, and it's always a pleasure to be in the city that's closest to my home, which is Lauderdale Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to conclude this.
Thank you so much.
Presentation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Thank you kindly. At this time, um, we would like to go to item B, a presentation regarding the license plate frame law. And this has been asked to be put on the agenda by our City Attorney, sir. Uh, before you do that, please let the record reflect that Commissioner John T. is here. Thank you.
Check. Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this presentation will also be assisted by the Police Department. Uh, basically, just want to emphasize, a new law was passed, not by this city council, but by Tallahassee. So, complaints should go to Tallahassee. That prohibits, uh, basically obstruction of any, uh, license plate by, uh, frames. That basically your tag must be clear, must be readable by police, by the Police Department. Uh, so, that's the new law. It took effect October first of this year, but we need to go on a public education campaign because the penalties are, uh, is a, is a second-degree misdemeanor. And you also could go to jail for sixty days, also fined for five hundred dollars.
Can you explain it a little bit more? So, when you say it's not to be framed, what does that mean essentially?
Bas- basically, when, uh, in fact, I was talking to Mister Wilkinson, and he had, he had experience in St. John's County, he had a cover on his tag. You can't cover your tag with any, uh, plastic or, or tent. Uh, also, your frame cannot cover any written material on your tag. So, uh, basically, your tag has to be clear to a certain degree, that the police can see, read your tag number, also your tag decal. So, the goal of this law is to make your tag not to have any obstruction, uh, object on your tag.
Okay, okay. Thank you kindly. Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you so much. I'm sure you have more to say. Thank you.
You're doing the stuff.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you so much for, for presenting. Thank you.
Um, so, as the City Attorney said, um, nothing can be covered. No, none of the lettering, none of the decal, um, but that's always been on the books, but it is now, it used to be a violation. Now, it's been upgraded to a second-degree misdemeanor. And, uh, just to go over what the, uh, next slide, please, the, uh, the penalties are. A second-degree misdemeanor is up to sixty days imprisonment and or up to up to a five hundred dollar fine. Uh, and then a first-degree misdemeanor is up to a year imprisonment and or a thousand dollar fine. And then we're also gonna touch on something that's a, a third-degree felony, and that's up to five years imprisonment and or up to a five thousand dollar fine.
Wow.
Just keep that in mind as we're going through, uh, these two statutes. Um, the statute that, uh, talks about, um, the license plate frame covering is State Statute three twenty point zero six one, altering a license plate. Um, so, a person may not alter the original appearance of a vehicle registration certificate, which is the piece of paper that you keep in your glove box, uh, the license plate itself, a temporary license plate, a mobile home sticker, or a validation sticker, which is the, um, the little yellow sticker that's on your license plate. And this cannot be done through mutilation, alteration, defacement, change of color, or any other manner to include the license plate frames. Next slide? Oh, that's perfect. Thank you. Um, so, a person may not apply or attach a substance, a reflective matter, illuminated device, a spray coating, or-
Can we make that a little bit larger? Can they zoom that? Is it possible? No? Perhaps not. Okay, okay, go ahead, sir.
So, the pictures, the, the top one is, uh, the, an example of a spray that people apply to, uh, to obscure their tags from cameras, which is used for tolls, uh, LPR license plate reader systems, um, and as well as, um, speed cameras and red light cameras. So, and then the bottom one is, um, a covering like, uh, like, uh, the City Attorney referenced, that when a picture is taken of the license plate, it does the same as the spray. It, it obscures the tag, so a picture cannot be taken. So, it looks, it looks fine, like when you're up and behind it, but as soon as a picture is taken, it's, all the letters are, are disappear. So. Can all, can also not use other material onto or around any license plate which interferes with the legibility, the angular visibility, that's for the cameras, so, because a camera picture isn't always straight on. Sometimes it's, it's at a funky angle. Cannot affect the detectability of any feature or detail on the license plate. So, any lettering, any, any word, the My Florida on the top, the County on the bottom, the, the decal sticker, none of that can be obscured or blocked. And interferes with the ability to record any feature or detail on the license plate. And so, a person who knowingly violates this section commits a misdemeanor of the second degree. Like I said, it used to just be a violation, and now it's a misdemeanor of the second degree. But that doesn't always mean that you're gonna be, um, arrested and put in the back of a police car and brought to jail. Uh, many times, it'll likely just be a criminal citation, as we often issue with, uh, DW, driving license suspended, or other minor, um, criminal and traffic infractions. Uh, before I move on to the next one, is there any questions on, on that first statute?
I don't think it's a temporary license plate.
Yes, sir. So, that's just, that's included in that statute that it can't be obscured, it can't be manipulated, it has to be in its natural form on the back of your vehicle?
So, if by any chance, uh, thank you. By any chance, uh, the license plate is stolen from the motor vehicle, the owner is not allowed to put on a temporary tag. That has to, that temporary tag, I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say. I don't allow people to do that. You get up in the morning and your license plate is stolen. To, uh, let's say if your license plate is stolen, and some owners will create a temporary tag and, and write the number until they get a permanent tag. Is that permitted?
Well, you don't have the tag, so that's not altering or tampering the tag. So, if you have a case number with you and can justify that your tag was indeed stolen, like you call the police, you get a, a police report, uh, keep that case number with you, so that if you do get pulled over for that, you can verify that the tag was, was indeed stolen. Ideally, you shouldn't be driving the car until you get that replacement, a trip to the DMV, uh, to obtain a new one, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right, the next statute is, uh, is a new statute. Uh, it's State Statute three twenty point two six two, which is license plate obscuring device prohibited. Um, so, the definition of a, um, license plate obscuring device is a manual, electronic, or mechanical device designed or adapted to be installed on a motor vehicle for the purpose of switching between two or more license plates to permit a motor vehicle operator to change the license plate displayed on the motor vehicle. And this is done while driving, not stopping, pulling over the side of the road, or at home. Um, hiding a license plate from view by flipping the license plate so that the license plate number is not visible. Covering, obscuring, or otherwise interfering with the legibility- Covering, obscuring, or otherwise interfering with the legibility, angular visibility, or detectability of the primary features or details, including the license plate number, validation sticker on the license plate. And interfering with the ability to record the primary features or details, including the license plate number or validation sticker on the license plate. Next slide? And then these are some examples of things that can be purchased online to manipulate your plate so that it's not recorded by cameras. So you have, the first one is a tag flipper. The second one is a, like a blind that comes down over the tag. And then the final one is almost like a film that goes over the license plate at the press of a button. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. So the penalties for that statute, just to purchase or possess one is a second-degree misdemeanor. So the sixty days in jail and up to five hundred dollar fine. To manufacture, sell, offer to sell, or otherwise distribute a license plate obscuring device is a first-degree misdemeanor. So up to a year imprisonment and/or a thousand dollar fine. And then to use a license plate obscuring device to assist in committing a crime. So if you commit a crime and you have that on there and you use it, it then becomes a third-degree felony. So it'd be an ad charge to whatever the offense is. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. So dealer tags, is that allowed? You know how when you go and you leave and they always have your advertising on the back? Because I happen to have one on my car. Do I need to take it off?
If it covers any of the lettering, your decal stuff.
I don't think it does.
As long as you can read, so a lot of Florida license plates are different. But the generic one is My Florida on the top. None of that can be covered. And then usually you'll have the county or Sunshine State on the bottom. And as long as that is clearly read, without any of those letters or any part of the letters being covered, as well as the decal, as long as no part of the decal is covered, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just take it off anyhow, right?
I would say that's the safest option. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Do appreciate it. At this time, we have a presentation in honor of Sergeant Pendergrass. And this has been requested by our city manager.
Yes, and I'll ask, are you making a presentation?
Me again.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to Joe. As many know, we have a Sergeant Pendergrass who worked with the city for many years past, a few years ago, due to COVID, I believe it was. And we wanted to, or the union wanted to make a presentation to his family. Also, at this point, we'll turn it over to Major Soren to start the presentation.
Thanks, sir. So Sergeant Pendergrass was a beloved member of the agency and the city, resident of the city. And to keep his legacy alive, we wanted to present his widow Denise with his service weapon that was made an operable. And the two unions at the department, the Fraternal Order of Police and the Police Benevolent Association, as well as the command staff, pooled money together and had a nice shadow box created to present it to her. So if I could have the union members come up and bring the shadow box and Ms. Pendergrass?
No, she can't, but
On behalf of the unions and the command staff of Lauderhill Police Department, we present to you Cory's
No pictures, no pictures, please.
Cory's service weapon and sergeant's badge, as well as all of his awards that he received, all officer with us. So in memory of Cory, we'd like to present this to you.
I guess no pictures other than the chief, right? Chief, the chief, yes. Okay, great. Go ahead, chief. Okay.
Well, first and foremost, I want to first and foremost give honor to God, just for just making it this far, just being in the spotlight, just, you know, within the city and knowing that, you know, being in the city and being involved in the city, it gives me a connection to Him. So first and foremost, I'm grateful for the City of Lauderhill Police Department. Truly, truly grateful. Also, I'm grateful for my Broad Estates St. George community for coming out. They have truly been a pillar to me. They have truly kept me going, and I'm truly grateful for that. Thank you, Kenny, our city manager, for presenting this recognition. I greatly appreciate it. And each and every one who has had part in this, Commissioner Donna, thank you so much for your encouragement, your encouraging words, being here during that journey. It's meant a lot, as well as Sir Ray Martin, I thank you for your words of encouragement. So just giving thanks to each and every one of you who have been involved and played a part in this. And again, the City of Lauderhill Police Department, I cannot thank you enough. You have truly, truly been there for me. You have showed love. And I just thank the City of Lauderhill. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are now on to Item D, and this is going to be a presentation from Broward County School Board Member, Dr. Jeff Holness. Requested by Vice Mayor Richard Campbell. Vice Mayor? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. It is an honor for me to be here. Commissioners, our city manager and our city attorney, thank you very much for having us here today. I'd also like to thank the residents, and I see Ms. Cooper, Mr. Wilkinson, and all the residents. Thank you so much for being here. I just want to recognize senior school board staff who are here with me. We have Dr. Tumer, who is the central regional superintendent. And we also have Dr. Hodge, who is the School Transformation Office Superintendent. And later on, she will also introduce our wonderful principals from the Student Transformation Office, and Dr. Hodge will take care of that. So Mayor, Commissioners, today I just wanted to give you an overview of district-wide academic success, District Five academic highlights, academic success in Lauderhill, as well as academic implementation timeline, as well as an update on Broad Estates Early Learning and Resource Center, and our estimated twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six revenue and cost impact. So we'll go to the next slide. Okay, so Broward County Schools, as it says, we did it again. For the second year in a row, Broward County Public Schools earned an A rating. And the number of C-rated schools were reduced by a half from seventy in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to thirty-four in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And the district reported non-D or F-rated schools. And Madam Mayor, I think that deserves a round of applause. Now, more than half of Broward County Public Schools operated, operated schools, rather, are now A-rated. Out of the five largest districts in the state of Florida, Broward County Public Schools is one of two with non-D or F-rated schools. So I think that is very much impressive. Eighty-four percent of our schools receive A or B grades. Eight schools went from a C to an A, and we have five schools earning an A for the first time ever. And we'll go over those as well. In regards to District Five, District Five schools that improved from a C to an A, we have Horizon Elementary went from C to A. We also have Rock Island Elementary went from a C to an A. And also Sunland Park went from C to an A. District Five schools that receive an A for the first time ever in its history is Oriole Elementary School, Plantation Elementary School, and Board Anderson High School. Now, if we go to the next slide, you will see a chart. And basically, three schools increased by two letter grades in District Five. Eleven schools increased by one letter grade. And eighteen schools maintained the same letter grade for twenty twenty-four. And we'll go to the next slide, which shows academic success in Lauderhill schools. Now, if you look at the Lauderhill schools, every school in Lauderhill either maintained their letter grade or improved. We have Broad Estates and Castle Hill. At the time, Broad Estates included here for twenty twenty-four, maintained their C rating for two consecutive years. Endeavor Primary has maintained an A rating for two years in a row. And for two consecutive years, Larkdale and Lauderhill Paul Turner has held a B rating. Big gains at Dr. Martin Luther King from a C to a B in one year. And Royal Palm and Parkway has sustained a C rating for three consecutive years, demonstrating consistent student learning gains and increases in percentage points. Lauderhill six through twelve has proudly maintained a B rating for three straight years. So these are wonderful accomplishments that we're seeing, Mayor, in the City of Lauderhill and in District Five, that I am very proud of. And I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank our staff, our parents, and also our students, who certainly engage in terms of improving their academic learning outcome. So I'm very proud of our district. I'm very proud of District Five. But at the same time, we are not resting easy. We know that we can continue to improve, and we'll continue to make more significant improvement. Now, we're going to go over to the next slide, which shows some academic timeline. And I know that many of our parents, your students have engaged in Progress Monitoring One in the early part of the year. That provide baseline data regarding our students and what we need to work on as a school district to make sure they're improving. So what's coming up, and I'm sure Dr. Hodge will mention, is our Progress Monitoring Two. And our Progress Monitoring Two is to ensure that what we've realized in Progress Monitor One, where there are learning gaps, that those learning gaps are being filled, and hopefully Progress Monitoring Two will show improvement. Now, what's really important for our parents is Progress Monitoring Three, which comes up around April, May, and that's the one that actually stays on their record. And our goal is, as we go through Progress Monitoring Two and we see more learning gaps that we need to work on as a district, we're going to continue to do so to the end of the school year. So by the time we get to PM three, our students will be performing very well and hopefully even see more progress than what we've seen last year as well. So we'll move to the next slide. Just wanted to talk about Broad Estate Early Learning and Resource Center. And as part of last year's redefining our schools initiative, the board voted to repurpose Broad Estates as an Early Learning and Resource Center. And I had the privilege of visiting on the first day of school. And the programs currently offered include Early Head Start. Sixteen students enrolled. Head Start, nineteen students enrolled. VPK, seventeen students enrolled, and Pre-K ESC, we have ten students enrolled. So we've seen Broad Estates Early Learning Center as being a successful start. And we believe it will continue to grow, and it will continue to serve the community. It is important, as you know, and I don't know if anyone was watching the board workshop today, but we had an eight-hour board workshop on redefining our schools. So I had to leave from there and come here. But we do, we're tasked with the job of redefining and repurposing our schools. Broad Estates was one of them that we successfully did last year. There will be more because of Broward County Schools losing students. But nevertheless, we're going to approach this with fidelity and to ensure that our school district is high-functioning and continue to be high-performing. So I will move on to the next slide, which Broad Estates Early Learning and Resource Center, a place to learn, a place to grow for everyone. Now, community resource include innovation labs, book distribution, family resource lab, food distribution. Additional programs at Broad Estates include GED and ESOL options, which are evening classes, family welcome Wednesdays, which include breakfast, guest speakers, and community resources. And then we have, starting in January twenty twenty-six, workforce development and partnership services will be added. So before I move on to actually Dr. Tumer, who will provide some additional information, Dr. Hodge, if you don't mind, you can also come up and expound on Broad Estates and also introduce our wonderful principals from the School Transformation Office.
So good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Better Hodge. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the School Transformation Office. Before I do introductions, I would like to just take a moment to tell you a little bit about the School Transformation Office. So the School Transformation Office was established last school year. It identified many of our schools across the district who had academic challenges over the course of years. There are twenty-one schools. All of these schools are elementary schools, with the exception of one non-traditional, which you'll hear about today, and then obviously Broad Estates. But the idea is to really work with these schools with providing resources to make sure that they continue to fare well academically. And as Dr. Holden has shared with you this evening, our schools are on track to continue the progress that they've been making. Out of the twenty-one schools this past school year, we had over fifty percent of our schools to make an A or B. And we're working on getting the remaining C schools that we have moving. We have three schools in the north, two in the south. And the majority of the schools are centrally located here in the City of Lauderhill. So I do want to just take a moment to introduce you to some of key staff that are here to support the community as well as the schools. So I'll start with my two directors. We have Dr. Francine Barr Stewart, who's one of our directors, and as well as Ms. Shanetta Coachman Beavers, who is the other director for School Transformation Office. In addition to that, we do have principals here from the City of Lauderhill. We have Ms. Phillips from Castle Hill Elementary. We have Ms. Rumble for Royal Palm Elementary. Also, Ms. Fleming from Endeavor Primary Learning Center. And we also have Ms. Freeman from Broward Estates Early Learning and Resource Center, as well as she is also the principal of Wingate Oaks Center. So just a little bit about Broad Estates. We are very happy about the progress that we've made in just about roughly six, a little over six months. I think we started the transition a little after January, after the board made their decision. Very happy because we have seventy-six students that are from zero to five years old at that school. And we're continuing to grow, so we're very happy about that. But the interesting thing about Broad Estates is that it also, we provide adult education at the schools, so our community schools, and I work in collaboration with my counterpart here, Dr. Tumer, with the adult ed. And so we provide ESOL classes, as well as GED as well. And so that is going on, and registration is ongoing. So if anyone is interested in any adult, community adult resources, certainly you can reach out for registration. We also have a Welcome Back Family Support Initiative that we do. And that is every Wednesday from six, I'm sorry, from eight AM to ten AM. And that's with a variety of guest speakers. And so it's, we have those interactions with parents, and they're able to come in to participate in workshops around that piece. Also, we will have leases, because we'll have partnerships. Actually, they're on Broward Estates campus. And so we will be going to our board in February to bring those leasing agreements forward as well. And then obviously, our children, you know, our babies. You know, to see them from zero to five years old, I mean, that's where you start. You know, that's where the literacy start. And so we are very happy about what we're doing at Broad Estates. You know, that's where the literacy start and so we are very happy about what we're doing at Broward Estates. So thank you for the opportunity. If you have any questions, we will certainly be here to answer them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Hodge. And before I bring Dr. Tumer, um, Mayor, I just wanna mention uh for those who are following uh school matters and and state matters as it pertains to schools, um, we are in the process of redefining a- and uh uh repurposing our schools. Uh, but part of the concerns we have as a district, um, there is the emergence of uh Hope Schools.
Yes.
Um, and uh that is uh pretty concerning for our district. Um, because these are um options uh provided by the state to Hope Schools, um, which are basically uh charter schools that can uh co-locate on traditional school grounds. Um, and that would have space to uh available space for those um entities. So as a school district, we have received several letters. Um, one entity had requested co-locate into twenty-seven schools. And there are other entities as well that are sending letters. Um, we are working uh in a very, very uh cooperative manner, as it is within the law, uh, to examine these requests and to determine who is eligible and who qualify. But simultaneously, we as a district, we are redefining and repurposing our schools to make sure we are efficiently and effectively utilizing all of our space. So in terms of repurposing our schools, um, we are not only looking at um uh uh a possibility of having to uh close some schools, but not uh necessarily closing the, in the sense of closing, but utilizing those uh schools as we consolidate for um other purposes such as um partnerships with cities. Like we're partnering with the city of Plantation for uh intending to for the uh Plantation Middle School, as well as the city of Sunrise for West Pine. So we're hoping that the cities can also entertain our um idea of partnering with the cities, so we can maintain our schools in the traditional sense of the of the word. And also, we are looking to um do further consolidations. For example, we've considered um the Casey Wright Building in in um relocating staff into some of the spaces that we have throughout uh Broward County Schools. Um, uh, if we don't take action, uh, then um, you know, it may provide uh opportunities for um uh Hope Schools to co-locate uh into some of our schools. Um, uh, in any case, we are going to uh abide to the extent of the law, while at the same time proceed with redefining and repurposing our schools to better serve our students. So just wanted the residents to understand that because as the years go by, we're gonna continue to look at redefining and repurposing schools that could impact Lauder Hill as well as other cities as well. So in the meantime, I'm gonna have Dr. Tumer comes up uh to talk about, I believe, Commissioner Campbell. You you had uh some concerns uh regarding budget and the rest of the commission. So Dr. Tumer is gonna come up and elaborate on that.
I do have um a question as it relates to the Hope Schools. Uh, so you explained that to us quite thoroughly. Uh, but of course, it has to be uh vacancy. They can't just come in and say they want this particular school, right?
Right.
And then with Broward Estates, for instance, um, considering that it's not to capacity and that's what you mean in terms of the co-locate, because they would love to be able to utilize space there as well?
Um, well, we've received um uh multiple schools. Um, there are certain criteria in addition to uh capacity, in addition to available space um that they have to meet. Um, so the district uh look at every uh Hope School that sends us application and determine whether or not we believe they're eligible. It also um would uh uh de- depends on what our uh uh future or near future use of those properties are. So there's a lot of um uh criteria, a lot of variables that we look at. Our goal is to try to maintain our traditional schools as much as possible.
Sure.
While staying within the confines of the law for Hope.
But I guess the question I'm asking is, is it possible that they can be in the school at the same time as a traditional school if there's space?
Absolutely.
So that's where the co-
Yes, so co-locating, uh, actually, that's what it means.
Yeah.
Where they are in the school of any school with available space at the same time. And our understanding is that based upon how the law is currently uh written, that they can occupy these spaces without cost. Um, the traditional school will then uh have to uh foot the cost for the security, for example, the space, um, the maintenance and so on and so forth. Um, but there's a lot more involved to it.
Sure, sure.
Uh, that we're-
You're working it out, of course, the logistics. The other question um having to do with your partnership with various cities.
Right.
And I would assume that would mean then providing programs and resource for the community. Is that what you're looking for when you speak to that?
Yes, so so we have, and I'll and I'll have Dr. Tumer speak on the Plantation Middle School as well. But we have, for example, with the city of Plantation, they have sort of a um academic safety program that they're looking to put into Plantation Middle, um, that serves the community, uh, that can be of benefit to uh our students as well in the future. Um, so we're looking for that kind of partnership with the city. Uh, we're looking to have the conversation. So if the city of Lauder Hill wishes to speak to us, we are ready and willing to to entertain any any ideas or emerging ideas that that can come out of a discussion.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Holness. Uh, Commissioner Dunn?
Um, yes, um, so, um, Dr. Holness, you mentioned that there's a criteria um that will then help you to decide whether or not a school is um a potential co-location.
Right.
Um, so in doing that data analysis, have you identified that there's some Lauder Hill Schools that could potentially be a candidate for co-location?
Right, so currently, um, we have entities that have sent us um requests to co-locate. Um, and I believe, Dr. Tumer, if I'm not mistaken, uh, there might be one or two um Lauder Hill Schools because there, we have about four or five entities that request to co-locate. It doesn't mean they'll meet the criteria because there's a lot of steps that they have to go through.
Sure.
And a and a lot of boxes they have to check. Um, but we do have just one entity sent a request to co-locate in twenty-seven schools across Broward. Many of them are in District Five as well. Uh, it doesn't mean they will qualify, um, but it is, however, um, the intent of of those Hope Schools to occupy possibly as many spaces as they are eligible to occupy. Uh, we also have, um, I believe we received four or five different Hope School entities that are looking to occupy. Some of them prefer urban areas, some of them prefer areas uh that are less urban. Um, but nevertheless, uh, the the number one uh requirement is that the school must have uh availability, available space, and then there's a series of other requirements uh that they must uh meet before they can actually uh co-locate. Uh, should they co-locate, um, uh based upon how the law is written, uh, then it will be, um, it will basically be the expense of the district um to accommodate uh the Hope Schools because there is no indication of them paying for the space, paying for security, paying for maintenance and so on and so forth. But we're looking through and trying to work through all of that.
Okay, so basically, they will live rent-free and the taxpayers who pay for maintenance of the school will foot the bill. And then as a charter school, charter schools are usually, you pay to go to charter school, right? No, no, okay. All right, so you haven't yet, so you've had requests that Lauder Hill Schools could potentially be called, but you haven't really identified which school?
Well, there are schools all across the district, not just Lauder Hill. I I believe we have schools in quite a few cities that um Hope School entities are looking to possibly co-locate. Uh, it is, it is not uh um specific to a a city. Um, they're looking at any opportunities district-wide.
Whoever there's space, and there's an opportunity, then they'll-
Correct. And and so as a school district, it is responsible of us to move assertively in repurposing and redefining schools. I I believe I had foreseen uh something of that sort coming. And um, uh, uh, last year when I suggested Broad Estates, um, I I suspected that, um, you know, uh, we would be heading in in some sort of a direction as this.
Okay, so City Manager, um, I know you had assigned Zach to work with the school board on, um, so then has he been working with Dr. Holness's office to further conversations?
Yes, he has.
Yep.
And will continue and and I'll I'll continue based on just some of the questions that came up tonight uh as it relates to the ability to uh rent space. Those were questions that we had also received from some community groups.
Yep.
Uh, as it relates to Broward Estates as well, but Zach has been working with his office and he'll continue to do so.
Great, and then my final question is, what is it? So you've said what the city can do, like continue to work with you, have conversations, explore partnership, but what can the community do?
Okay, so, um, what I would say regarding the community is, um, Broward County Schools is seeking to increase enrollment. And um, we are uh um basically uh putting efforts into marketing our programs because we have great programs. Um, we're trying to improve uh our facilities condition. So we would encourage the community to encourage neighbors and friends to uh bring your kids to Broward County Public Schools because uh uh availability of space is the concern. So if our residents can return to Broward County Public Schools, it would help to alleviate some of the issues that we're facing as far as Hope Schools and other concerns that pertain to low enrollment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. So I, it should be the next slide, I think. Um, uh, okay. So I wanna talk this evening, uh, very briefly at a high level about our economic situation and our uh enrollment picture for twenty-five, twenty-six and highlight uh what that means for our Lauder Hill Schools in particular. Um, at the same time, this is the data that represents what's happening district-wide as as well. So you'll see a transparent and consistent um view of our current reality. Uh, here's um basically the overview on this slide where we, our costs, especially our benefits, uh, continue, continue to rise. So we're dealing with um a squeeze because we're losing students. And and not only just in Broward, this is a phenomenon that's happening pretty much uh in in South Florida. So because we're losing students, um, and we haven't necessarily um kept pace with losing staff at the same rate, we're we're seeing uh a squeeze. So uh with less money coming in and more more mu- money going out, that sets the financial context of uh staffing decisions and school supports, conversations that we're having. Dr. Holness said just a second ago that we were in an eight-hour meeting earlier today, uh, talking about redefining and trying to look at opportunities where we can um shrink our footprint, um, but at the same time, bring back our students uh by uh programming and being smart with our uh facilities. So um, that's what uh this slide would uh would indicate. Uh, next slide. So our staffing model is tied to uh our unweighted FTE. FTE is full-time equivalent and that basically means that's um a student. So um, the number of students that we actually have uh enrolled in these counts are um from uh uh August twenty-eighth. Um, when student counts drop, our staffing allocation drops with it. So that means fewer instructional positions, fewer support roles, uh tighter budgets at the school level. And for Lauder Hill Schools uh in particular and 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 all schools throughout uh the district, we're really feeling uh that pressure. So we have to make some very, very tough decisions based on the fact that we're losing students and our um staff is still um pretty much the same as as we speak based on this data. Next slide. So it's, um, I I spoke about un- unweighted FTE and and again, that's just our uh the basic student. There's also a term called weighted FTE and those are our students that come with other other needs. So they get funded differently because they have other needs that they uh have to get funded for. But um, based on our uh unweighted FTE, our number trends are downward and that that loss has been compounded over years. And this is a challenge that we're working through with our principals because as of um, uh, yeah, um, well, about a day ago, we are on a higher hiring freeze. So we're really trying to minimize the damage that could happen this year, not even waiting um for next year to roll around because we understand that actions need to take place now. Uh, Superintendent Hepburn uh understands uh the the, what the task is and obviously what the board with Dr. Holness and his colleagues are are asking uh that that get done. So that's what um we kinda see with this slide. But also, um, we see that with enrollment dropping, our base allocation is tied to those losses. So with revenue declining and benefits and and um fixed costs increasing, um, we're losing um students faster than we can re- recoup the cost. So this mismatch is forcing some really difficult operational decisions to be made and which makes city partnerships like Dr. Holden's um spoke about earlier even more important, uh, because we really need that. Uh, next slide. Oh, that was it. So, um, basically, um, the details, I pretty much tell a clear story that we need to reverse the enrollment declines.
Yeah.
We need to protect our school programs and make sure that our families see our s- um, schools as the the first choice. Like Dr. Holden's just said, we, that's the, that's the message, choose BCPS. And we uh, we have a slang, uh, a saying that basically says, choose the best, choose BCPS. So please tell that to your neighbors and uh everyone around because we really uh believe that.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you so much. Uh, Commis- Vice Mayor Campbell?
Dr. Holness. Um, uh, the report you gave, you know, it's too good. And um, I hope the folks here along with um this city can get the good news out because I assure the media is not gonna pick it up. Um, what you should have probably done is blend it with some bad news and you'll probably get more attention.
The Hope Schools.
But but we, we have a responsibility to, um, every moment we get to put out good news because we will not rely on others to do so, they will not. Um, what a difference between uh twelve months. I recall um twenty twenty-four, just elected, um, came into a situation I had nothing to do with and but found myself in the middle. Um, it, at that time, appeared that we would not have a resolution. And here we are today. But what was good about the discussion then, and I hope the school board will use it as a, as an experience, is that it was clear to me that there were so many folks in the community were not aware of the changes. And that was one of the main problem. So I'm hoping that the school board will recognize the importance of ensuring that the community is updated on whatever changes. And I think the easiest part is we've passed, um, the challenge you have, Dr. Holness, is there were a lot of promises. And I see the president of the homeowners association steering you down. Um, and they will be on top of you to make sure that most of those concerns and promises are dealt with. And um, so I encouraging the school board to constantly keep us updated, the community, so that they will be a partner, not uh as it appeared in the past of the school board doing things and they were not a part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you kindly, Vice Mayor. It, have you concluded your presentation, sir?
Yes, Madam, um, Ma- Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that, um, just for the residents in this phase of redefining, um, we don't have any Lauder Hill Schools um that are closing. Uh, unfortunately, there are some schools in District Five and throughout the dis- throughout the county, actually, that are suggested for closing that we discussed today, one of them being North Fork, which is in District Five, uh, Plantation Middle School, as well as Beer uh Middle School.
Okay.
Is is being discussed. There's no, currently, none of Lauder Hill Schools. But with that being said, I just want our residents to understand that with the concerns that the district has in terms of budget, in terms of Hope Schools co-locating and so on, the redefining process is ongoing, which will happen next year.
It's fluid, things can change.
And and it could, it could be Lauder Hill being affected in subsequent years. Thank you.
But you'll keep us apprised.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you kindly, Dr. Holness. Thank you, sir.
You.
Just wanna shout out one other administrator that's here tonight, that, um, one of our amazing APs uh from Parkway Middle, Ms. Kimberly Calhoun Jones.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. I also see, I believe it's the principal of Locktail that is here as well, if you can stand up, madam. Yes. Thank you kindly. Thank you very much for that presentation, Dr. Holness. Thank you kindly. Thank you very much for that presentation, Dr. Holness, and thank you for your A team that is here as well. All right, I was advised by the city manager, city clerk, that item E has been taken off the agenda. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And we are now going to go to item F. We'll just give those who need to leave a little bit of time to do so. A minute or less. Thank you so much. And speaking of that, I do see some board members from the educational advisory board. Who is the new chair of that board? Do you know, city clerk? You don't know? Okay. City manager, that's something I would like to know. If you guys can get that information for me. I believe that the previous chair, well, previous, she resigned. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. All right, oh. From, yes, you're from the education advisory board. Yes, Ms. Margaret? Of identifying someone? Okay, thank you very much. If you can keep us updated. Thank you very, very much. Okay. All right, so we are now at item F, an update presentation on May Francis Brooks Jenkins Park. And it's been requested by myself. And so a few months ago, a couple of months ago, time goes by quite quickly. I was at a homeowners association meeting at Broward Estates in St. George, and that conversation came up. And it was a quite spirited conversation as there were members of the board that were quite concerned about the progress of the renovation of the park. They indicated that it has been an ongoing challenge for quite some time. And basically, they needed to see movement and they needed timelines. So I thought that it was important for us to have this discussion because about a week ago, one of the board members reached out to me and indicated that it was also discussed in another group. So I wanted to get an update, but something a little bit more specific, if possible, in terms of timelines. I think that's very important. Okay? I don't see Mr. Wilkinson. Did he leave? Do you want to get him for me, Mrs. Wilkinson, so he can hear this from beginning to end? Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Cooper. Okay, Mr. Wilkinson, we were just waiting on you to start the discussion, sir. You have to take a front row seat. This is your item. Okay, please present.
If I may, before you start presenting, just to speak quickly, I think one of the things that's important also is to understand just some of the history. And I know I asked Martin to put together a presentation to not just illustrate some of the concerns or the issues that we've had, but also to put together a timeline which he'll present. But just to go back, I think it's important to recognize that this project is being funded with GeoBond dollars. And over the years, there have been changes that were made to this project based on community input. Initially, it was supposed to be just a general office space, and that space was changed to increase, to make it a police substation, as well as it'll house the gym, for the boxing gym for the community to utilize. So as we went through the years and had to make these changes, there were some redesigns that were done, which resulted in some price changes, which resulting in us having to allocate and find additional dollars. So again, those are just some of the things that took place. But I think it's important to understand that the changes that were made were community-driven. So I've asked staff to bring us up to speed as to where we are now. The ground, there has been groundbreaking, so there is some earthwork going on. So if Martin, you can walk us through the presentation that you and Damian put together.
Certainly. First of all, thank you, Madam Mayor, commissioners and city manager for trusting our team to kind of bring this to a reality. It's been a long-term, I, a long, yes, I do have that. It's been changing. And as much as we want it to be perfect, it's always something, things are not perfect. So and it is important as we are looking for the timeline, what's coming, it's a little bit important that we all understand what happened. Because the N T P, Notice to Proceed, was given in June thirty, basically July. And right now, we don't see walls coming up. So everybody's asking, and of course, we are also eager to get this completed. What happens, can you please?
Next slide.
Have next slide. So, we skip the, it is a perfect site. It was flat, you know, it's clear, it's grass. There was no trees, not many trees. So it is a perfect place to have a police substation and a boxing ring, right? So the architects kind of worked out a, a, a design. And this went through a series of iterations and was contracted. It was bided, contracted, and awarded. And it is important for you to know that the, basically, the building is going to be above the flood zone. So because this area floods generally, or used to flood, we've been doing some improvements. But it is basically as we have it now, even though it is flat, it's going to be a little higher than the grass where we sit. So they need to build a building pad, so it's bringing a lot of feel. But when, when the excavation to remove the grass started, we found really unforeseen conditions. Especially, we found a lot of silt. It's that yellow, yellow soil material that is plastic and it won't sustain a, a, the load from the building.
Martin, need for point of clarification. If you can just tell us what is the plan for that space? So you mentioned a police substation. If you can just give us a picture in terms of what the park is going to look like, and then you can give us the process.
Personnel walking, maybe if we go to the first slide, there is kind of a 3D model of what.
What does it look like right now and what's the plan?
Right now, it's, well, we had a, I didn't see it, slide number two. What, when you say how is it look right now?
Yeah, what does it, what is its current state and what is the city's?
And I'm getting there. So I got you. This in, I'll be brief. So we found this, that this used to be a formal water treatment plant. It used to be, and they filled, they had a pit, sludge pit, just like what we have in our water treatment plant. And this pit just is basically eighty-four percent of its size, it is, is under the building pad. So we had to take all that material, which is not good for construction. We also found abandoned pipes, twenty-inch pipes, metal that, you know, they're not good to sustain a building. And we also found concrete, concrete slabs that need to be removed. And that's what we're trying to show. Go to the, go to the next one. So this is the building pad is in red, and the next one is all the things that we found exactly under the future building. So the next, the next, yes, that one.
This is the current state.
Well, this is how it looked last week.
Okay.
And, and, and you see this lodge pit, and you see concrete, and you see that we're starting to fill the, the site. So with that, what's coming, the current state is basically a little better than, we have a better slide. But Damian will take you to what it is going to be the timeline.
So Martin, when, when did this job start and finish? Because you had to do a whole lot of work. So what year was this that you started this?
I have a GeoBond.
Right, right. So just for clarification, you're talking the physical work.
Yes.
That just started a few months ago.
In terms of what was taken out?
That has just started.
Okay.
June thirty was the notice to proceed.
Okay.
So Damian.
Okay, all right. So just to echo what Martin was saying, we ran into some unforeseen conditions. Go to the next slide, please. Okay, all right. So this picture clearly highlights some of the issues that we've encountered when we started the, you know, removing the top soil. There were concrete foundations that was left in the ground, rebars, abandoned pipes. And as you can see, some of those pipes with a blue highlight, they had no support around them, which traditionally those pipes needed to have support. They weren't filled and they didn't, they weren't caved. So and as Martin alluded to, the sludge pit took up more than fifty percent, more than fifty percent of the building pad, which the load-bearing capacity, that wouldn't be good for the building. Because there will be settlement cracks and other issues down the line.
Next.
Next. Next slide.
And while that's coming up, it's important to understand that when that information came to light, we had to come back before the commission for approval. This was, there was a presentation made to the commission about a month or so ago requesting approval for a change order. So that information came to the commission as well, highlighting exactly what we just spoke of. So the community was made aware of our findings and then the additional approval that was needed as well.
Correct, correct. All right. What you're seeing is the initial schedule, construction schedule. Of course, you know, we had to adjust the timeline. Initially, as Martin alluded to, the N T P was issued, Notice to Proceed was issued on the thirtieth of June. Yes, and there are supposed to be nine months, so nine months from the N T P, which would have put us at April, May, which would have put us at May. But due to the unforeseen condition, it pushed back the schedule another three months. Next slide. Okay, so the adjusted timeline, Mayor, which is what you're interested in. The soil mitigation completion, that's going to be completed by the end of this month. We're way ahead, so I'm anticipating another week and a half. But, you know, just as contingency, I would say by the end of this month, the soil mitigation should be complete. We're going to start foundation, which is going vertical, the first week in January. Estimated date of completion is now pushed back to August twenty-twenty-six due to the unforeseen conditions. Estimated issuance of our TCO or certificate of occupancy, we're anticipating between the beginning to the end of September. All right, and.
Three months kind of delay because of the unforeseen conditions.
Okay, next slide. Or video. All right. Well, this is a ten-second video to show the current condition over there at the May Jenkins Park. Go ahead and play it, Andre.
That's old soil, new soil, basically replaced. And today, this was taken on Friday, today substantially more. And we hope to, to really start vertical after the holidays.
Sure. That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
But what is the plan? What, so it's going to just be a park? Tell me what's going to be on the property.
Right, so it will be a park. It will also have a police substation, which will include office space for parks and police, and it will include a boxing gym.
A boxing gym?
Yes.
Is that still relevant for you guys, Mr. Wilkinson? Okay.
The first slide, if I may, shows kind of the 3D model, if you could.
The 3D model. Back to the first slide, Andre.
What, first, just the presentation, that, exactly, so the, I don't, do you have it in your screen, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I see that.
So in the center is the boxing ring, that little square. And on the side, one of them will be a police office for, for a police, will be men. And the other office space will be for the parks. But this is all sit right next to the current parking lot and, and playground that is available for the. This, this was the perfect location, but there was a lot of things underground.
I'm curious to find out why the sport of boxing.
That was something that had been carried out by the police department. We had a temporary location in Windermere. We were looking for a more permanent location. St. George felt that that was a good location for them. That was one of the changes that we made from just general office space and increased the size to house boxing. This is a program that police has run for many years through their youth services department.
And it's still relevant? There's still children that are interested in boxing?
To our knowledge, it is.
I think we need to take a look at that.
To our knowledge.
I think we need to take a look at that survey. Yes, Marcellus, do you have something to say? Because like baseball, to me, it's kind of dwindling.
Good evening, everybody. As Mr. Hobbs just stated, for the last three to four years, probably even longer than that, we've actually been running the boxing program with our police department. Over the last couple of years, we probably averaged anywhere between seventy-five to a hundred kids per year. So it is actually a growing program in the city of Lauder Hill.
So, so last year, we had that program and this year?
Correct, around, probably about a couple more months before that.
I don't understand what that means.
So not, not a year ago, probably about a year and three months ago.
So I understand what that means because we had it temporarily housed at the Windermere Center. Programming was changed to provide other services in Windermere in anticipation of the opening of this site. So the program stopped while we started building this site.
Okay.
But prior to that, we've had those numbers that we were speaking of.
Okay, okay. So my, my question basically is because when this is built, we want to make sure that it is definitely a program that is going to draw the attention of the community. Don't want to go back. We don't want, what is it called, Monday morning quarterback?
Correct. It would, definitely not a Monday morning quarterback situation. We're one of the only municipalities that actually runs a boxing program. So that is, that is.
So within that gym, it would be a boxing ring? Will they have other equipment?
Correct, speed bags, you know, just all of the boxing necessities.
Just boxing?
Correct. Boxing, but we can also incorporate wrestling to it, anything that basically is inside a ring, we can incorporate in there.
Okay, all right. Okay. And Mr. Wilkinson, you're comfortable with that, sir? Okay.
That, that, the change was community-driven. It wasn't something that we just decided to do from a staff perspective. There were many surveys, and that was the community where it actually landed, working with the police department because they were in support of this program. So it is something that we've talked many times in many years, as he stated, with the community, and they were excited to have it housed within their community. That was one of the changes. One of the reasons that we increased the facility size was to include and house this boxing.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy that we have taken a look at it now in twenty-twenty-five versus the nine years ago because things do change, okay? And interests change as well. Yeah. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm actually going to, Mr. Wilkinson's comfortable, I see others from the homeowners association. Would you guys like to add? But if you'd like to add, you would have to come to the podium. Okay.
My wife just brought to my attention that the last commission that was here, they voted to name the substation after Sergeant Corey Pendergrass. So I don't, I don't know whether you know that or not. Yeah, you were here. You probably voted on it. To bring you back, to bring you up to date, Mayor, back in two thousand sixteen, the property that we're discussing now, it was a big water tower there. I don't know why after the city manager checked that property out, they didn't realize what was under the ground there. I live right down the street from it. And like Ms. And like uh, uh, Mr. Martin said, there's a, like a building was there and they tore it down, I don't know. But um, it seemed like to me that this should have been checked on before they start digging or uh, trying to instruct the building there. Now getting back to the boxing program, the boxing program, we have people now that's at Saint George Park. They come out every Saturday morning because they don't have a facility to bo- boxing, practice boxing. They, and uh, they box each other, they spar, they exercise right there in the park. So on Saturday morning, if you're not doing anything, come out there and you can see them.
See them, okay, thank you kindly, thank you for that addition. All right, we have now concluded our presentations, thank you to Martin and Damian. And uh, we are now going to go to our quasi judicial matter and I will turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any witnesses need to be sworn in, Molly, item number one?
What if, a city attorney, um, what if we bring up all and you can just swear all of them in?
Yep, all witnesses, uh, item number one, item number two, and item number three. Just stand up and raise your hand, you don't, you don't have to come all the way up. Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Sir, sir, you have to, you're also an applicant, uh, yes, go ahead.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you.
They did it, they did it, of course, yeah.
Thank you, you're safe.
Right, okay.
My mic is not, so I'm using this.
No worries, sir.
Item number one, resolution twenty five R eleven two fifteen, a resolution of City Commission of Lauderdale. Granted Sun Village Plaza LLC for forty-five seventy-one billiards LLC doing business as Classic Billiards. A special exception use development order to allow a billion of pool parlor used in the general commercial zoning district on a three point nine acre site located at forty-five sixty-one through forty-five seventy-five North University Drive. For, providing for effective date, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, City Attorney, good to see you, Molly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you may present.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, City Manager and City Attorney and Assistant City Manager for the moment. As was read to you just now, this is a special exception use application. It's for Classic Billiards, which is located at forty-five sixty-one North University Drive. Andre, could I have the next page? Subject location falls within the Sun Village Plaza on North University Drive. The business name is Classic Billiards and the business and owner's rep is here with me today, his name is David Bartosiak. Next page, please, Andre. This gives you a little bit more detailed information on the site. It has the address there on North University Drive, it's on the west side of the street, north of Wawa. And it's falls within the general commercial zoning district, next page, please, Andre. This page outlines the public notice requirements. As you all know, we have to adhere to the required public notice requirements for quasi judicial hearings. This gives an outline of all of the ways that staff uh, met those obligations in notifying the surrounding community. Next page, page, please, Andre. And this is the applicant's proposal. Classic Billiards has been located at this location or pool hall under that name um, since the early two thousands, over fifteen years. In two thousand and twenty-three, David's group bought Classic Billiards and they came in front of this commission or the commission at the time to obtain special exception use approval to operate that pool hall. That pool hall also has in conjunction with it a restaurant bar that's allowed by right on the property. The applicant is requesting this special exception use approval to expand the existing pool hall by almost twice as, as large. So they have, are having so much success at that location, they're now able to grow and they're interested in growing into the bay that's immediately adjacent to them and expanding their pool hall. David and Classic Billiards' goal is not only to expand the pool hall, but to really try to elevate this pool hall in the world of pool. And he can tell you a little bit more about it if you have specific questions. But he's really working to make a top notch facility that's sort of known in the world of pool, can compete, draw competitors and also produce competitors that can compete nationally in pool as well as internationally.
Right in the city of Lauderdale, huh?
Right in the city of Lauderdale. Uh, next place, page, please, Andre. You're all familiar with the standards required for special exception use approvals. Some of the benefits that staff sees coming out of this expansion is the increased tax revenue, the job creation that it makes right here at home. Um, and we always love to see when our businesses are doing so well that they need more space. Uh, we find that it's in conformance with the seven standards of approval required for special, special exception use. And the next page, please, Andre, is just an aerial of the location on University Drive to give yourself a picture in your head of where Classic Billiards is. If you haven't been and you enjoy playing pool, I definitely suggest you put it on your list. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Okay, my colleagues, okay. Well, I will tell you, you do have a question, go ahead.
Not, not a question, more of a comment. Um, I, I've, I've been there and uh, it is really nice, uh, since the new owner had purchased it, new, all new tables, the ventilation system, the AC, everything's, they're doing a really good job, so I really like what they're doing.
Thank you for that endorsement, Commissioner. And you would say the same, I hear, Comis- Commissioner Janti?
Yeah, I've been there.
Okay, wonderful, all right, we've all had the opportunity to review this item and have asked our questions and concerns. Uh, prior to this meeting, we've had this for about a week or so, I am comfortable, um, and so I would like to have a motion.
So move, second.
Okay, let's do that again, a motion. Okay. Okay, wonderful, and now we will open to the public? Close to the public, City Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed five zero, congratulations, sir, and we will be there to visit again. Okay, thank you. You're always invited to the party, the party does not start unless you're there, so, so, okay, thank you kindly. All right, we are on to item number two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, item number two, resolution number twenty-five R eleven two twenty-six, a resolution of City of Commission of Lauderdale approving a site plan application with conditions on Boys Gas Service Inc. on behalf of Sharp Energy Inc. to develop a vacant parcel of land for outdoor storage, distribution, storage of gas, oil and other fuels and alike. Industrial zoning district on approximately point nine one acre vacant parcels generally located on the south side of Northwest Sixteenth Street between thirty-fourth Terrace and thirty-eight Avenue, providing for effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, Molly.
Thank you, ma'am. We're looking at the address of thirty-five fifty Northwest Sixteenth Street, next page, please, Andre. You're all familiar with the site of you, as you have seen it in a couple of formats and um, we hope that this tenant is here to stay. This is the applicant's information you see up on the screen. This is Boys Gas Inc. is the property owner here, the business is Sharp Energy and on behalf of Sharp Energy, I have Bill Hancock. He's the Assistant Vice President of Sharp Energy, I also have his attorney, Michael Wild and some of his professionals um, from his site planning team here with us tonight. Next plate, page, please, Andre. The next page over lies a little bit about what the site is, it's a vacant lot, it's located on thirty-five, at thirty-five fifty Northwest Sixteenth Street. It's east of the UPS in the heart of our industrial district. The land use is industrial, the zoning is light industrial, the property size comes in at just shy of one acre. Next page, please, Andre. This page outlines the public notice requirements for this um, application, this is a site plan, it has slightly varying uh, requirements. Then did the special exception. In addition to the items that you see on the screen, November tenth, the applicant did hold a community meeting, was advertised to the public. The point of that was to bring the site plan to the community, to hear any concerns and be able to answer any questions. It was fairly well attended with at least six, six residents had signed in and there was a few more there that may not have made the sign in list. And the residents did have the opportunity there to ask questions about the use of the property. Um, and the use being the storage of those propane tanks that they were the most interested in, next page, please, Andre. In July of twenty twenty-five, this applicant, Sharp Energy, was granted special exception use approval for the use of outdoor storage, for the outdoor storage of bulk fuel. As one of the conditions of that approval was to gain site plan approval and building permitting to operate the use at the site within one hundred and eighty days of that approval. And that is why we bring this application to you here. They've been through two rounds of the Development Review Committee. Um, and this is the site plan that we have landed on that is in conformance with all of the standards. The applicant is requesting site plan approval in order to develop the vacant parcel for outdoor storage and distribution and fulfi- and fulfillment of bulk storage of gas, oil and other fuels. That is our umbrella category for the storage of commercial vehicles and equipment, again, the umbrella category in a fully enclosed area. Their proposed hours of operation, seven AM to five PM. Next page, please, Andre. These outline the site plan standards for approval. Staff finds that they have met these to staff's satisfaction. Next page, please, Andre. This is a site. Um, to the north of this site, we have some industrial and some manufacturing uses. To the north of that, you'll see the canal and you'll see just the bottom of the lot lines of some of the single family homes in the West Kenlark neighborhood, which is to the north and to the east of this site. Again, we're surrounded by warehouse and industrial uses, the site is currently vacant and unimproved. Next page, please. Thank you, Andre, and here's the site plan. I'll give you a better view than this black and white small rendering next. Um, through the DRC process, the Planning and Zoning Division, the Building Department, the Engineering Division, the Fire Department and the other disciplines on that board had the opportunity to make comment on this site plan. Uh, to make critiques on this site plan, the applicant then came back and responded satisfactorily to that, to those comments. We then forwarded this to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, recommendation of approval. This site is just less than an acre, it's improved with parking for the trucks to fill up, it has an accessway. It's improved with lighting and fencing as well as new trees, Andre, could we have the next picture? And there, there you will see it. So as you know, this site is currently operating, this business is currently operating out of Northwest Forty-Ninth Avenue. They are neighbors with our City of Lauderdale Water Treatment Plant. Staff finds that this is a better way for them to be filling these trucks that are then going to go out into the, into the business areas to serve businesses. So you will see that pull in area on that rendering where trucks can pull in off of Northwest Sixteenth Street. They can fill up and then they can go out to the sites and make their rounds distributing this propane to businesses that use it as part of their operations. The majority of those trees that you see on site are newly planted, right now there's very, very few existing trees on site. You'll see it's being improved with a fence, with some screening, paving. And not quite evident here, lots of great lighting. And that concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor, I do have the, the applicants here and I'm sure they are willing to add any detail.
Sure, uh, come Vice Mayor Campbell.
For a very long time, um, I was one of those who, and I commend the operators, um, the owners ra- rather, of moving the site from Forty-Ninth Avenue because of multiple problems. So I do support this um, project, however, um, staff, um. The question, uh, I don't know if it's um, the city manager or is some time ago, we had a discussion on the charter school that they should have been back to see us. And the charter school is located south of this proposed, um. Um, where are we and are we gonna have uh, upcoming discussion in, in regards to the charter school?
I didn't bring with me the date that the charter school has to come back to.
But we're on top of it.
But twenty twenty-seven, yes, sir, we are on top of it. Good, absolutely. Daniel Key Struggles, um, twenty twenty-seven is when their special exception use will expire and they would not be eligible to renew their special exception use.
Daniel, let's, that's, Commissioner Campbell, charter school, uh, applicant is not here.
Okay.
And I don't, I wouldn't.
But you, but you understand why I'm going.
You can, off the record, you, if you want to find the information, you can ask, obviously zone it, but I wouldn't put it on this agenda for discussion purposes.
Okay. What it does relate to.
It's a concern.
The concern I'm having is on the nature.
I understand. I, I do understand your concern, but I, I would rather you ask off the record versus on the record with respect to charter school.
Okay. Staff would say that this is an appropriate, Light Industrial Zoning is an appropriate location for industrial uses.
And so Molly, we, we, of course, on the day, this is quite familiar with the area. Um, the vicinity in terms of what is around it and, and the Vice Mayor did mention the charter school. I, I will adhere to what our City Attorney has said in terms of not going in depth with discussion, but I think it is of concern and it's always been. And so you and your department has recommended that we move forward. So two things, tell me in terms of what is around the area, number one. And number two, why did you conclude to the recommendation?
Um, the, where they are currently located now, you're less than fifty feet from your closest single family property line. Staff does not view this as an unsafe use. Um, but there are odors and there are sounds that come along with the trucks that operate propane uses. And staff feels like this is a much more appropriate, suitable location for this type of use based on the buffering and the surrounded physical buildings that separate this location from single family residential, the actual physical buildings as well as the uses, because you're, you're surrounded here by automotive, stone cutting, other uses that do have, tend to have adverse impacts on the neighborhood. And we, we're putting in all of these site features as a way to mitigate those.
So you're saying that you're less than fifty feet away from a residential?
Where you are currently on Forty-Ninth Avenue, right next to the water treatment plant.
Right.
You're right next to a canal and then your closest single family home. This gives a whole lot of physical buffer as well as vis- visual buffer that people don't have to drive by and necessarily look at it, that's not the prettiest. Uh, we do find that this is a much.
So, so I know we can't go into depth with the school, but how close is the school from this location?
Andre, could you find me the aerial? South, two parcels. So there's a, there's a parcel right, right south of that, you see the building that immediately abuts there.
As it relates to.
Property line and south of that, across, south of Northwest Fifteenth Street is the school location. It's part of the reason that um, staff doesn't encourage those type of uses in the heart of our industrial areas. Because we don't want to tie the hands of our other businesses that operate more intense uses that aren't appropriate next to children.
So, so as it relates to your recommendation, explain to me then why the recommendation to move forward?
We feel that is the appropriate location, it is, it's, it falls in line with the intent of the zoning district. It falls in line with the City of Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan and how we speak to Light Industrial through the Comprehensive Plan. And then beyond that, the, the county's Comprehensive Plan too, and what they see as appropriate uses within industrial zoning.
Okay, right, all right, I'll have some more questions, but I see that Commissioner uh, Dunn has a question as well.
And I wanted to add for the record that the, the existence of the school within Light Industrial is a, is a nonconforming use. Pardon, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, yes, um, so I just have a couple of questions and I, I really appreciate the applicant um, being very intentional about going out to the community um, and getting community input. Um, two questions that I, I'd kind of like to talk to the applicant about. Um, first, I know that you're gonna be, sir? Yeah. So I know that the um, trucks are gonna come in between a certain timeframe, I think from seven to five. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, the delivery trucks, Michael Wild, the delivery trucks will come from seven AM to five.
The delivery trucks will come from seven A M. to five P M.
Okay, and then they're coming off of Sixteenth Street, so not necessarily going through any residential neighborhoods, is that correct?
That's correct. They come down Thirty-Eighth, which is the means of access down to Fifteenth and Sixteenth.
Okay.
But they'd be coming not through any residential areas, directly onto Sixteenth.
Okay, so we wouldn't expect any adverse impact on the residential in terms of traffic?
No, the, from an intensity standpoint, so we are, and again, I want to thank staff. We've been on this process for many months, or years even, working with staff and trying to find a suitable location within Lauderdale to replace the existing location.
Sure.
And the partnership has been great. We really appreciate all the work with staff. They've all been great to work with. And it took a lot to find a location in Lauderdale with the correct zoning that we could stay in the City of Lauderdale. This was that location. It's really in the middle of your industrial area. And as far as our use goes within an industrial area, it is a lightly intense use. And the amount of traffic that goes through there, through our facility, is nowhere near as intense as a typical industrial use. So our use is, and I have a picture. It looks like, this is not funny A I. graphics. This is a Google, just when we were looking at this site, the Google map that when you pull up this location, the proposed location that we're moving to has one of our delivery trucks delivering propane to a business right next door.
Oh, how funny.
To that, and I have that printed if you would like me to share.
Yes, I would. And then my, my final question is around the aesthetics of the space. And I appreciate the image. If you can go back to that slide for me, Andre. Oh, that is funny. So that's what the truck looks.
That'll give you a perspective of the trucks that do deliveries out of that site. And again, the, the need or the desire to be in Lauderdale has to do with the community we serve. So having those bulk propane tanks in the community allows us to serve the businesses and the residential uses in that area. It has the propane locally sourced in that area. So if there's ever an emergency, if there's a need to bring in backup power, those, that propane is already in the community. And it helps service. We have lots of customers, both residential businesses, government, that use propane for different uses. And so having it within the City of Lauderdale is a great benefit for us and our customers.
So final question around the aesthetics. So could you zoom in on that for me, please, Andre? So there is a fence, right? So people from the streets not gonna just be able to access very easily, so there's security.
So one of the benefits of this site that is very, so right now in our current site on Forty-Ninth, there's one gate. That gate is right up against the right-of-way. So when our trucks come in and have to service, they have to enter in to a gate. They have to park outside, and it causes some of the traffic on Forty-Ninth. The way that this site is designed is that the gates are on the property, so trucks can pull into the property to where the gated area is, to then pull into the back, to then fill. So the traffic will get off of Sixteenth and onto the property before they even have to enter into the gated part of the property.
Okay.
So we'll have some natural vegetation up front that currently exists, and we'll enhance that. Then there's, you go onto the property, there's a circle kind of drive. Then you have gates that are there that then go into the back of the property that houses the three propane tanks, bulk storage tanks.
Okay, got it. And then you'll have trees, so it's gonna be aesthetically pleasing. Where, you said that there is a, is there, where's the residential, Molly?
So I think the, and I don't want to speak, the residential was where, I think she was referring to.
Where you previously.
The current site, the current site, there's, there's the utility, there's the engineering building part behind us. Then we have our facility, and then there's a canal, and then there's residence right on, right behind that canal.
But here, you're not next to.
Here, we are surrounded by industrial.
Industrial, okay.
And there's a buffer behind us with a pretty large building. And so that buffers, and then there's a whole nother, then there's Fifteenth Street behind us. And then on the other side, there's another row of buildings, and then a canal, and then the residence on the other side of that canal. So there's a much greater buffer from where we currently are compared to this new site. And so there's a greater distance. And again, we are, this current property is, as Molly said, is a vacant piece. And so we are filling in kind of around us, and there's some.
There you are.
More intense, there's a bunch of tractor trailers that are parked to the east of us. Yeah. And so there's, so like I said, we're, our use is a much less intense kind of industrial use for that, for that location.
All right, thank you.
Thank you kindly, Vice Mayor.
Is there a timeline for your project?
Yes, we're, our plan is to get started as soon as possible.
What exactly?
So we, we were just talking about that in the hallway. We think probably, well, we still have to get our actual construction permits, but we think that's probably a couple-month process. And then to relocate the property, probably another four to six months. So we hope within six months to be out of the current facility.
So Molly, let's say this item is tabled. Will this impact on their start date for their project?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm a little, in fact, I probably should have started this discussion prior to getting here today, but it's a project I support. However, I have to do, take advice from the attorney in regards to the other issue I raised. But I'd hate not to vote for it. It's, it's, I, I, I would have been in a better position if it was tabled until I get some legal advice in regards to the questions I was asking before.
I understand your position.
So you're making a motion to table the item? Do you want to take a minute?
Let me take a chance on both of us.
Okay.
Because it would not be fair to them to delay their project, which the other issue is not their fault. So.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. And so we've had discussions, and we are now going to get a motion.
So moved.
A second?
I have a second.
Okay, so with a motion and a second open to the public.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Ms. Cooper. I represent the West Kenlark Homeowners Association, fifteen forty-one Northwest Thirty-second Avenue. We did meet with the gentleman. We canvassed the area to invite a lot of the community as we normally do. So when you don't see Ms. Cooper at the commission meeting, I'm resting. But we, I don't drive at night, so I do know that we had something else to come before the commission. And we do canvass the area. A lot of our residents do not show up, but we did have a core people there, and I'm so thankful that they did show up. I didn't have any concerns. I do know that the area is industrial. I do know that they're relocating. We were concerned about any storage of large eighteen-wheeler staying there. We were assured that would not happen. We were concerned about, since that they're gonna be storing gas, oil, would that put the community in jeopardy? So we were told we didn't have to worry about that. We're always concerned about beautification. We don't want our community to be a dumping ground. Do you understand? So I want Dolly to come up. She was one of the ones, and I want to thank Dolly because she don't have a problem going knocking on doors.
So Ms. Cooper, at this point, you are endorsing this project?
Yes, I feel comfortable.
Okay.
And usually, whenever we have a presentation, I try to remain neutral. And that's one of, because I like to educate the community, and I want to hear their heart, how they feel. I don't like to influence anybody. That's just the way that I am. But I bring, my position is to educate and let the community decide. So, Dolly, I'm gonna give it to you.
Good evening. My name is Dolly Gibson. I am a resident of Lauderdale. I'm just one block from where they're opening the business. It's my concern is, and first of all, it has nothing to do with the City of Lauderdale, the old incinerator on Thirty-First Avenue. We're in between Thirty-First and State Road Seven, between Nineteenth Street and Sunrise Boulevard. That community right there, we're always dumped on. I was, my parents purchased that house in nineteen fifty-six. I've seen so many changes in the City of Lauderdale. But my concern is with that old incinerator, I lost two family members that was involved in a lawsuit from the City of Fort Lauderdale and that incinerator because of the fumes. I lost my best friend in that same community, like I said, and two family members, and quite a few neighbors. My concern is with the fumes, with the eighteen-wheeler, they say they won't be parked there, they won't be parked there for long. I've seen these changes when they come before the board. They say one thing, something else happened, happens. First of all, being in that resident, we have to deal with the Thirty-Eighth, and you've done a great job. I understand that club four A M. is now closing at two thirty A M. So I stay on top of this. I miss very few H O A. meetings. I'm always there. I'm concerned about my community, the development, and I try to attend every meeting. But with that facility coming in, and I have gas in my home. I love gas, I cannot cook on an electric stove, so I encourage it. I, my only concern is we get all the unwanted in that area, and it is industrial zoned. I ask, what the community asks, we need a wall there for protection. We have to deal with the noise, the bullets, the shooting on Thirty-Eighth from those clubs. Those bullets don't have, and I'm, I'm directly behind it. That First Royal Homes on Thirty-six stairs. And our concern is, and it's not only just this company, that, that industrial area, we need a wall like they have on I ninety-five and the Turnpike. You have to protect the community. We're part of Lauderdale too. It's all we always get dumped on. You say we're a team and we're here to work together, but please, if you're going to, and it seems like it's a done deal, please put a wall up, protect the residents in that area. We're tired of it, please.
Thank you kindly. And so, Ms. Dolly, thank you for your thoughts. And so what is your position? You are endorsing the project or you're?
Only if they put a wall up. And I know they, the company itself, not to single them out, but that entire development, we're right there. We're tired of the noise every weekend, the shootings. And we just need some protections as the residents. Like I said, I have gas. I love, I use gas, but to have it right there in our residence, we all, we're tired of it.
So you're saying, so you're saying no?
I say no.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, can I say?
One moment, one moment, one moment. Okay, so we have Ms. Cooper and we have Dolly. Okay, one and one. All right, city manager, as it relates to a wall, I know that we have those project, there's a long list. Give me your thoughts on that.
This is the first that we're hearing about a wall, but it's something that we can look at as it relates to, as part of our geo bond in the past. We have included walls as a viable, I guess you'll say expenditure, but I would have to work with the engineering to see the cost to provide the requested information. We did, as part of the last geo bonds, we erected walls along Nineteenth Street. But from what I'm understanding, she's speaking of a wall. I don't know if she's saying around the business or around the homes.
I think, that's how I'm interpreting.
Around the homes.
The homes.
Yes, or along, the extent of Thirty-Eighth and then the extent of.
Yeah.
So that, that is something that we would have to look at because, again, this is the first that we're hearing of that request. I'm not saying that it's totally out of line, but I'm sure there'll be a number of approvals and waivers that we'll have to receive from all of the property owners along that, along that stretch. But again, we do have dollars in the common geo bond that's being proposed, assuming it makes it onto the ballot in March. But we do have walls included in that, in that offer. So it's something that we can take a look at based on the conversation tonight.
Okay, so if the geo bond does not pass, then we cannot get the wall?
If the geo bond does not pass, then we have to find other means to try to find funds for the wall, but it would not be as quick of process, assuming we did.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Dolly, thank you for bringing that up, and I think you can perhaps start that campaign. Okay?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Dolly, please give us a little credit. We inherited some, some stuff from Fort Lauderdale. And you, I don't know if you're aware that we're trying to make some changes on Thirty-First Avenue. Okay, so give us some little love. Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. I think we've had enough discussion. I would like to have a motion.
Yes, sir. There was a motion, and then I opened to the public. That's right, thank you, sir. Okay, so we're now close to the public. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and with the hope of getting a wall for the community. Okay, so this has been passed five zero, congratulations. Yes. We appreciate it, and now we are moving on to item three. Molly, could you get their information card?
I do have it all, I can get it to you for sure.
No, you'll be fine, Ms. Dolly.
You ready, ma'am?
Yes, yes, yes.
Item three, resolution number twenty-five twelve two thirty. Resolution of the City Commission of Lauderdale, Grant, Totally Mark, Property L P., and Angel Touch Therapy, a special exception use development order to allow in the General Commercial Zone District and Educational Remedial Use Tutoring place on a eight-point-four-seven acre site located at seventy-one seventy-three West Oakland Park Boulevard. Pardon for a fact date, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, City Attorney Molly.
Andre, could I have the next page? I bring to you a special exception use application for the use of remedial or tutoring. This is not a use that the City Commission has an opportunity to review very often, but it is one on our books that does require special exception use approval. And this applicant is Angels Touch Therapy LLC. The agent's representative, who is the C E O. and business owner and operator, is Malitza Horta, and she is here with me this evening. Next page, please, Andre. Gives you an overview of the location. This is what I casually know as the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza on West Oakland Park Boulevard. It's in the building behind it, in the location that used to be the former D M V. It's located, it falls within the General Commercial Zoning District. It's a site that's about eight and a half acres. Next page, please, Andre. For this application, each of the required legal advertising steps were met by staff, and this provides those details. Next page, please, Andre. This talks a little bit about Ms. Malitza's proposal. The petitioner is requesting to provide tutoring instruction by Child Development Associates Accredited Instructors to children from grades K. through twelve after school and during school for those that are homeschooled and during the summer recess. Instruction includes academic skill through tutoring in areas such as reading, writing, math, vocab, spelling, and language arts. The applicant proposes to operate this tutoring establishment from eight A M. to six P M., so that falls within sort of normal business hours. Her model will operate similarly to a Kumon Learning Center, if that's a name that folks are familiar with. It's a similar model. It is not the primary education of any of these students. It supplements what they're already getting at home through their homeschool. It supplements what they're already getting at home through their homeschool curriculum or at school through their public or charter school curriculum that they may need extra help or special guidance on. Or perhaps it's a subject that the homeschool parent isn't as versed at teaching their student. Next page, please, Andre. We're all very familiar with the standards of approval for special exception uses. Staff finds that this application meets each of these standards with flying colors. Next page, please, Andre. And here is the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza. The Dunkin' Donuts is the little square out parcel that you see in the middle of that red plaza on Oakland Park Boulevard, just east of Inveroy Boulevard. Pardon me, Inveroy Boulevard West. And that concludes my brief presentation.
You very much, Molly. I think this one is actually, I shouldn't say easy, but.
It is a, it is a positive use.
It is definitely a positive use and so at this time, I would like to have a motion.
Let's move.
A second? We have a motion in a second, open to the public, close to the public. City clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin? Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed five zero. Thank you so much, Molly. You did an exceptional job. Thank you, Daniel. We appreciate you guys, thank you. All right, and so now we are on to our consent agenda. You will find the item uh that is leading that is item number four. The consent agenda essentially are items that um the city manager and the city attorney assume that um we've discussed and we're all very much comfortable with and it has been put on to just be passed tonight. Nevertheless, you still have an opportunity to pull the item if needed, both from the dais as well as in the public. So I am gonna give um everyone a minute, sixty seconds on the clock, please, to review this and then we will then proceed. Likewise. Number ten for uh myself and also Commissioner Dunn. And I think there might have been another one for me as well. It was the one with um, it's the, this one is interesting. I obviously am much, very much comfortable with it, but I, I think it, it should be uh discussed. It's item number five. And even item number four as well. What say you colleagues? Well, we're here for that purpose, to discuss these things. All right, you're comfortable? Okay.
Five and ten?
Absolutely. Okay, so for the items that we are pulling, of course, four, five, and ten. For the other items, may I have a motion? May I have a motion? A second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. City clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and that has been passed five zero. Let's proceed to item number four. So item number four, city attorney.
Uh, Madam Mayor, item four and five are similar, can I read the title?
Oh, absolutely, you can.
Item number four, resolution number twenty-five R twelve two, two hundred twenty-eight. Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lauderdale approving the release usage of state law enforcement trust funds to donate to the Broward County Human Trafficking Coalition to promote educational issues of human trafficking as its annual community, community awareness event in amount not to exceed one thousand one hundred dollars, providing for effective date.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And so I believe the police, yes?
I read titles.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Item number five, resolution number twenty-five R twelve two twenty-nine. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lauderdale approving the release usage of state law enforcement trust fund to donate to undercover Santa, which provides food and other support to families in need in amount not to exceed one thousand one hundred, providing for effective date, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. And so chief, these two items are yours? Okay, if you can um come to the podium, please, thank you. Thank you so much, chief. Good to see you.
Good, thanks.
Okay, so item four and five, as the city attorney indicated, are quite similar. I just kinda wanted a synopsis of both, cause I find them to be quite, as they.
Five and six?
No, just four and five.
The donations from the law enforcement trust fund. The donations from the law enforcement trust fund, chief.
I'm showing them as five and six.
You probably have the older.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, so we have it here as four and five. And so of course, the first one having to do with monies that are going to be uh donated as it relates to human trafficking. And the second one is monies that is going to be donated as well for undercover Santa. So if you can just give us, cause I think those are two very important items.
Yeah, so these are um organizations, well, one of them at least, the Human Trafficking Coalition that we've uh donated to in the past. So they have an educational um event that they host every year, I think it's January, uh, DCC. I don't have the backup information, so I'm talking from, I'm just knowledge. But every year, um, they have an event. So it's an education um component that they do and it involves kids to discuss human trafficking. So it's a private uh nonprofit organization and we can utilize funds from our um, uh forfeiture fund to be able to fund them. So that's one and we've done it, I believe, for the last three years. And um, the following one is a, again, a nonprofit organization and they're providing um, um, food and other, and toys and other items to needy families. So again, this is a nonprofit organization and we can use law enforcement trust funds.
Okay.
To donate to those organizations.
Is this for the city of Lauderdale or could we do our own thing as well? Cause you, the police department does do something for the children.
We do, so this is just making a donation to an organization outside of the city of Lauderdale who requests. So all they, they submitted requests, we run it through our uh legal and it was run through our legal department to review that request. There are certain stipulations that they have to comply with and they comply with those.
Yes, I think that they're two very important.
Yes.
Um, items and we thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, all right, so that was simple enough. We're gonna go to item ten and so um.
Mayor, we need a vote. Yeah, those two items.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know, I saw. It's interesting. Yeah, but under, you did, right? Yes, okay, all right, so we are good with that, all right? And so um, if we can actually have a motion?
I shall move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, open to the public, close to the public. City clerk, please call the vote for item four and item five.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, that has been passed five zero, we're on to item ten.
Item number ten, resolution number twenty-five R twelve two four four. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lauderdale approving a proposal from Calvage and Donald and Associate Inc. Under a previously approved consultant agreement in amount not to exceed one hundred forty-five thousand dollars professional service necessary to provide preliminary basis, design, report, or process options and recommendations. Adopting, authorizing the city manager to execute the proposal, providing for effective date.
Yes, and so this has been requested, of course, by our city manager. If you can give us an overview of this, sir?
Yes. Uh, what we're requesting is the approval of a consultant agreement uh which will uh allow for staff, specifically the engineering and the utilities department uh to work with them to perform an overview and make recommendations as to improvements that are needed uh in order for us to remain in compliance uh with the PFAS requirements that are set forth by the federal government. So uh because of the value of this agreement, it's required to come back before this commission for consideration. But this is the first step uh in us analyzing and reviewing our water plant for needed improvements, uh assuming there are needed improvements to remain PFAS compliant. Uh, once the report is completed, then the information will be incorporated into our capital improvement plan, presented to the commission for consideration at some point. Uh, we will have to identify funding sources to pay for the improvements as it relates to PFAS. But this is the first step uh in that process and for us to work with the consultant to perform their review.
Okay, so tonight we're voting primarily on the consultants and is this standard practice? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so standard practice in bringing in a consultant to assess and, to assess and to then provide recommendation in terms of.
So we did something similar about three or four years ago as it related to uh needed uh capital improvements to the water plant. As a result, that we issued a uh, a bond. Uh, and we have a, what, a thirty million dollar uh improvement plan based on a review and the recommendations from the consultant. So what we do, uh, is because we don't necessarily possess the needed expertise in-house, we have a consultant's list where we, our, our individuals, our water plant, uh, I'm sorry, our water plant director, our water director, our public works director and our city engineers work directly with them to walk them through the processes needed. But this is something that we do, being that we don't have those expertise in-house.
Right, so I guess when I'm asking standard practice, this is best practice across the board, across the county? Okay, so other cities, of course.
Absolutely, it's, it's normally needed to support the capital improvement plan and usually bonding agencies would like to see uh these consultant reports before moving forward.
Okay, and you indicated that this is first step?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, and so in terms of the selection process, give me a little bit more insight into that.
We have a, an approved list of, of vendors that were approved by the commission. Normally, we go out on an annual basis, we go through a solicitation process and from that solicitation process, we come up with a number of consultants, uh, engineering consultants and the pay, based on the expertise and what we're looking for, we normally pick from that, that list of consultants.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Dunn?
Thank you. Um, so could you help me to understand, Kenny, what is the tangible gain from the study? And will it kinda move us closer towards removing PFAS from the water?
I'll answer your second question first. Yes, it will eventually. The tangible gain is uh, is an assessment uh of our water plant, our processes, our equipment. Uh, and from that, they will provide recommendations as to any upgrades, any changes that need to be made to the plant uh so that we can, uh, I guess you'd say seek financing or funding to make those upgrades. But without this review, we don't know what needs to be done. So this is an engineering review, so the tangible outcome are recommendations uh based on their review and the federal guidelines, which are ever-changing as to improvements that need to be made to our water plant and our filtering system.
Okay, so this is, this is the final study, there won't be another study after this study?
Correct.
That's where I'm getting at. And then, and then my other question, I, I think I heard you, um, I, so this is, is then gonna position us to go after funding in order to, to um, to put the recommendations into place?
Correct. So yes, once we have the plan in place and we know what those improvements are, we'll work with uh our federal and state legislators to identify funding uh through appropriations as well as any potential grants that are available uh to us. But uh we, in, in most cases, they are looking for what they call shovel-ready projects. So normally, you have to have gone through this process, you have, normally have to have those items as part of your capital improvement plan and then usually some design work uh to be done on the front end so that they're considered shovel-ready uh for those appropriations and or grants that are available.
Okay, so I'm not an engineer, but I, in, in trying to kind of understand the scope of the work. Um, so I noticed that water sampling and pilot testing were not a part of the scope of work. Could you help me to understand?
So I'll, I'll, I'll let Herb come up, but I, I know that is something that we normally do uh continually, right Herb? As it relates to water sampling, you can just speak to those specifically.
Good evening, Herb Johnson, Utilities Director.
Yeah, help me to understand that, Herb, please.
So um, Commissioner, currently the EPA is requiring us to do testing for PFAS and during that testing process, there's certain levels of, you know, the PFAS contamination is concerned. And as we go through that testing process, what it does is it tells us what we need to do to mitigate the PFAS contamination. So during that process, this whole um assessment will kinda, kinda bring us to full fold of where we need to be or where we need to go as the assessment provides us with information on what type of uh mechanism that we need to put in place to mitigate the PFAS.
So you, so staff is doing, is currently doing the water sampling, so that's why it was excluded from the.
That is correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, fantastic. And then my final question is um, what is the estimated total price tag from the study, from study to goal treatment, construction?
So that'll be part of the assessment. If you look into the report or the, the proposal, it outlines that there's a bill probable construction cost that would give us a kinda guideline of how much this would cost the city.
Okay, all right, so the one, this is like a not to exceed price?
Uh, for the, for the, for the assessment.
No, no, yeah, I'm getting, I'm clear.
Yes, for the consultant.
For the study.
Not to exceed, yes, one forty-five.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you kindly. At this time, may I have a motion?
So move.
A second? We have a motion in a second, we are now open to the public, close to the public. City clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate it, thank you kindly. All right, we are now going to be going over to the items that are not on the consent agenda. It looks like item thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
So on that item fourteen, Mayor.
Yep, so nineteen, alrighty. So let's, now we have, guys, I am the mayor, thank you. One mayor. Thank you kindly. All right, so item thirteen is off the agenda. We all don't talk at once. And now we are moving on to item number fourteen. And so this one, of course, needs um someone to be placed in here. Uh, so if we can now have the city attorney assist us.
Uh, item fourteen, resolution number twenty-five R twelve two thirty-two. A resolution, City Commission, City of Lauderdale appointing kids and bonds by Commissioner Sir Ray, Ray Martin to serve as a regular member of Code Enforcement Board for a three-year term expiring November twenty, two thousand twenty-eight. Appointing Dwight Nelson by Commissioner John T. Hobson to serve as alternate member of the Code Enforcement Board for a one-year term expiring November two thousand twenty-six. Point blank by the City Commission as a whole as all alternate member for a one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-six, providing for effective date.
Thank you so much. And so uh city attorney, I would then assume the other persons that are on here are just individuals who applied as well?
I, I believe the clerk might have a better uh answer to that question.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um, and so I, this has been uh requested by our commissioner. Um, so I will then turn it over to Commissioner.